Recording in progress.
Chair Williams, we're ready to begin.
All right, thank you. Welcome to this special meeting of the Planning Commission this Thursday evening, November 17th. I now will call this meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, thank you. Ashley, will you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Williams.
Present.
Vice Chair Ebner.
Present.
Commissioner Nugent.
Present.
Commissioner Patel.
Present.
And Commissioner Wiggins.
Present.
Thank you. So, good evening and welcome, everybody. We're excited to be here in person with options for virtual participation. Fortunately, we continue to have that. I understand that the city's website went down this afternoon, and it's currently still inoperative or inaccessible. But the Planning Commission agenda is still accessible, as is the Zoom link, I feel like that's too, as is the Zoom link through which the public can participate as usual. Both have been posted on the multiple city web, sorry, on multiple cities' social media sites, including Facebook and Twitter, so we will be carrying on with the meeting tonight. Because this is a special meeting, we do not have a general public comments section, and public comments should focus on the topic of the public hearing, which is the only item on the agenda for tonight's special meeting. So we will ask for your comments at the appropriate time. For those attending in person tonight, please complete a yellow Request to Speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, reuse the Raise Your Hand feature in Zoom, and you'll be called upon at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press *9 to raise your hand, and when called upon, press *6 to unmute yourself. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. Okay, so can we go ahead and hear the first item? Ashley, will you call, will you?
Yes, Chair Williams. 222 East Fourth Avenue, Drager's Market, new five-story retail office residential mixed-use building, PA 2021 071.
Okay, so we'll start with a staff presentation, followed by applicant presentation, and then we'll go on to clarifying questions from planning commissioners, and then public comments. The applicant will be given up to 15 minutes to present, and the members of the public are given two to three, two to three minutes to speak, depending on the number of speakers. The applicant may also be given five additional minutes at the end to respond to the public comments, so that'll be at the end of all the public comments. Once the public hearing is closed, then the commission will deliberate and render a decision on the project. Finally, the Planning Commission will be making a recommendation to the City Council tonight on this item, and the City Council will be the final decision-maker on this. Okay, so with that, we can go to public, I mean, I'm sorry, with that, we can go to the staff presentation.
Wendy Lala, Associate Planner. Good evening, Chair Williams and members of the Planning Commission. The item before you this evening is a public hearing for planning application 2021 071, a development proposal for a retail, office, and residential mixed-use project at 222 East Fourth Avenue. The project site is located in downtown San Mateo and is identified by the red outline on the screen. The site is currently occupied by Drager's Market, which is a two-story building and includes an underground parking garage. The project site is bounded by East Fourth Avenue to the north, South B Street to the east, East Fifth Avenue to the south, and Ellsworth Avenue to the west. The project site is primarily surrounded by commercial spaces such as restaurants and stores. To the northeast is the proposed bespoke project at the current Talbot site, which is a public-private partnership to develop a mixed-use project. There are some multifamily residential buildings nearby, such as the six-story building for the Gramercy directly to the south. There is also a 10-story building for the Stratford and a six-story building for Strat Bali Court further to the south. The site is located in the central business district with residential mixed-use overlay, zoning district, where retail, office, and residential uses are allowed. The site is 49,478 square feet, which is equivalent to 1.13 acre. The existing grocery store is two stories and totals approximately 60,965 square feet. On the center of the screen is an image of the project site along the Fourth Avenue frontage. To the left, top, and right side are images of some commercial buildings surrounding the site, which are mostly one- and two-story buildings. On the bottom is an image of the Gramercy, which is a six-story multifamily residential building for 145 units. The project proposes the construction of a five-story mixed-use building totaling 74 feet 3 inches in height. The building would have a floor area ratio of 3.1, which is a total floor area of 49,478 square feet. On the ground floor would be a grocery store of approximately 17,658 square feet. On the second through fourth floors would be 104, 544 square feet of office use. On the fifth floor would be 10 rental units consisting of eight one-bedroom and two studio units. All units would be dedicated to the low-income level, which is 80% of the area median income. The project also includes 221 off-street parking spaces, which would be located in a parking garage on the surface level and extends two levels underground. Here is an image of the site plan. In yellow is the retail space for the grocery store, and in gray is the ground floor of the parking garage. The parking garage is accessible from Fifth Avenue, and a ramp here leads to two more floors of parking below. In blue is the ground floor for the office. There is an elevator to the three floors of office space above, shower rooms, and a bike storage and trash room on the bottom-left corner. The pink is the lobby to the residential space above. Here is an image of the north side of the building, fronting Fourth Avenue. As you can see, there are multiple entrances on the ground floor grocery store along this primary frontage. On the upper floors are the office units, which includes an exterior balcony. Behind the glass railing at the top, you can slightly see the residential units on the fifth floor, which are stepped back and not very visible from the pedestrian level. Here is an image of the east elevation of the building, fronting South B Street. The entrance to the residential lobby is located towards the center of the site. The garage and shared lobby are located to the left of the ground floor behind these windows. Here is an image of the south elevation of the building, fronting Fifth Avenue. The garage entrance is located next to the landscaped wall. Here is an image of the west elevation of the building, fronting South Ellsworth Avenue. The outdoor plaza is located to the left of the image, and the entrance to the office lobby is located towards the center of the site. There are currently 39 existing trees on the project site, of which 38 are considered protected. The proposed project includes the removal of all existing trees, and will plant 33 new tree, new street trees and four trees on-site. The applicant would also provide a payment of a fee to the city's tree planting fund as necessary. The project includes open space throughout the site. On the ground floor is an outdoor plaza at the corner of B Street and Ellsworth, which consists of 1,450 square feet of outdoor space and 2,070 square feet of community open space. On the third and fourth floors are terraces for office use, and on the fifth floor are roof decks for the residents. This project was previously considered by the Planning Commission at a study session on September 14, 2021. The Planning Commission had requested the applicant to add more landscaping, including street trees on B Street, and adding more residential units, including the addition of two and three-bedroom units, and consider placing the loading zone on Ellsworth. The revised plans now show multiple modifications, including minor design changes and the removal of the Class IV bike lane on B Street, per City Council direction. The project would retain the Class III shared bike lane, shared bike route instead, as well as add more street trees and living walls. However, there has not been a change to the number of residential spaces nor the bedroom count. Since the project proposes over 5,000 square feet of office and retail, the project is subject to the city's commercial linkage fee. The commercial linkage fee requirement allows developers to either pay a fee or construct low-income units. The applicant has selected to provide 10 low-income units on-site when only eight are required. As such, the city must approve an affordable housing plan with the other planning entitlements, and the project, if approved, has been conditioned to enter a BMR agreement prior to issuance of a building permit. The BMR agreement includes standard requirements to provide equal access to amenities for low-income units and market-rate units. However, since there are no market-rate units proposed with this project, the standard condition has been modified to focus on providing amenities, such as dedicated parking and transit subsidies similar to other commercial tenants. The project is not subject to the Housing Countability Act because the housing units constitute less than 2/3 of the total square footage. The project site has an allowable density of 50 units per acre, which can result in 10 units on the site. Because all units would be dedicated to the low-income level and located within half a mile of public transit, the project qualifies for an additional 33 feet in height, 50% increase in density, zero residential parking requirements, and four concessions and unlimited waivers from development standards under the state density bonus law. As a result, the project's, the project's proposal of a height increase of 19 feet 3 inches above the height limit of 55 feet, and request five waivers and one concession. On the screen is a list of the requested concessions and waivers. Staff has evaluated the concession and waiver requests and have not identified any concerns relating to public health or safety or conflicting with state or federal laws in order to deny the requests. The first concession request is to reduce the required retail frontage from 75% as mandated by the municipal code to 47% along B Street and Ellsworth Avenue. As you can see on the screen in red, because the grocery store only covers approximately the northern half of the site, this results in a retail frontage of 47% along Ellsworth and B Street. The southern portion of the site will consist of parking spaces for shoppers, and the lobbies, bicycle room, and trash and utility room for the building, which do not provide for a retail frontage. The next request is a waiver request to exceed the maximum bulk standards. The zoning code requires a maximum of 150 feet for the linear building dimensions for portions of the building above 55 feet in height, and the applicant proposes 197 feet 6 inches. The zoning code requires a maximum of 170 feet for the diagonal building dimension, and the applicant proposes 260 feet 7 inches. The second waiver request is to increase the distance for the street wall built-to-line. The zoning code requires buildings to build up to the property line to a minimum height of 26 feet, resulting in a zero-foot setback. The applicant proposes a 4-foot 6-inch setback instead along the Fourth Avenue, Ellsworth, and B Street frontages in order to provide a larger sidewalk as encouraged by the city's pedestrian master plan. The third waiver request is to increase the built-to-line exception from 25% to 30% along the Ellsworth Avenue frontage. As mentioned previously, the zoning code requires buildings to be built up to the property line but allows an exception of 20% when the space will be used for an outdoor plaza. The applicant is requesting an exception of 30% instead along the Ellsworth Avenue frontage, resulting in a larger outdoor plaza. The fourth waiver request is to increase the maximum floor area ratio from 3.0 to 3.1. As mentioned previously, this is a five-story building within the height limit of the state density bonus law. A floor area ratio of 3.0 would result in a maximum of 148, 434 square feet, and the applicant proposes a floor area ratio of 3.1, which totals 152,533 square feet. This would allow the project to accommodate the requested retail office and residential unit size. The last waiver request is to not provide the required off-street loading space requirement on the private property. The applicant seeks to dedicate the ground floor to the grocery store, parking garage, bicycle storage, trash rooms, and lobbies for the offices and residential units. Rather than provide the loading zone on-site, they are proposing the loading zone to be located along the public right-of-way of B Street. To determine the required number of parking spaces, the project completed a parking demand study as allowed for projects within downtown San Mateo. The study determined that 208 parking spaces are required for the commercial uses. As a result, the project consists of 221 parking spaces throughout the surface-level parking lot and two levels of below-grade parking garage. This exceeds the parking requirement by 13 spaces. The project also includes 21 long-term bicycle spaces in a bike storage room on the ground floor and 17 short-term bikes, short-term spaces along the street frontages. The project parking demand will not exceed the proposed parking supply throughout the day. To analyze the traffic impacts of this project, the city's transportation consultants, Kittleson, prepared a transportation impact analysis under CEQA and the city's general plan. Overall, the TIA determined that the proposed project would generate fewer vehicle trips. Grocery stores generate more trips than office and residential uses, so even though the proposed project would be larger in terms of total square footage, the total number of trips will be less. The project will also not cause a significant VMT impact as the project's within a half-mile of high-quality transit area and is located within a low VMT area. The TIA also concluded that the project will not result in any adverse level of service effects at this would maintain, as it would maintain a minimum of Level D at all signalized intersections and Level E at all unsignalized intersections. To help further reduce overall single occupancy vehicle trips, this project will implement a transportation demand and management plan. The trip reduction strategies include go-pass and way-to-go passes and other optional measures. On the screen is the project list of planning application entitlements. The first entitlement is a site plan architectural review for the construction of a new mixed-use building. The project design meets the findings for this bar as it is in scale and harmonious with the character of the neighborhood. The project also requires a site development planning application for the removal of substantial vegetation, including 39 trees, of which 38 are protected. The project will plant 37 new trees and pay in lieu fees as necessary. An approval is also needed for an affordable housing plan for the construction of 10 low-income units to satisfy the city's affordable housing commercial linkage fee, linkage fee requirement. Staff has reviewed the proposed project, and it appears it meets the required findings for approval, as noted in the resolution in Attachment 1. In accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, an addendum to the Downtown Area Plan Initial Study Mitigated Negative Declaration and the 2030 General Plan Environmental Impact Report has been prepared for this specific project site. The ISMND was adopted by City Council in May 2009, and the EIR was certified by City Council in October 2010. This addendum is intended to provide project-level, site-specific environmental clearance for the proposed project. The addendum demonstrates that the proposed project would not result in any significant impacts not already considered under the previously certified EIR and ISMND, nor would there be a substantial increase in the severity of the significant impacts previously disclosed. No new impacts or new mitigation measures necessitating a supplemental EIR were found. Furthermore, the implementation of appropriate mitigation measures for air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, and noise already included in the EIR and project conditions of approval relating to acoustics, parks, and hazardous materials would reduce all potential impacts to a less than significant level. The project includes a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, which is in place to ensure compliance with the mitigation measures analyzed and required by the original EIR and ISMND. After publication of the packet on Monday, staff has updated the conditions of approval based on input provided by the applicant as appropriate. The revised conditions of approval have been printed and distributed to you at the dais and are included in the accounts, in the chamber's public packet. I will also present the proposed changes to you in this presentation. The condition includes modifications to Condition Approval Number 2 and 4 regarding clarifying expectations for archaeological and cultural resources. To identify in the event of a find, construction has to stop within 33 feet of the find or an appropriate distance as determined by the cultural resource monitor or a qualified archaeologist. The same applies for Conditions Approval Number 95 and 96 regarding archaeological and cultural resources. Condition of Approval Number 9 Regarding the Site Management Plan has been amended to further establish a performance standard if sampling confirms the presence of volatile organic compounds for protection of the residents as reviewed and approved by the city's hazardous material consultant, Quarterstone. Condition of Approval Number 35 includes the provision of 10 parking spaces dedicated for residents during weekday evening and weekend hours. However, based on further input from the applicant, the city attorney's office, and the police department, staff has revised this condition to require six parking spaces contingent upon meeting the safety closure requirements. Since the applicant is voluntarily dedicating these spaces for residential use, there is flexibility built into the condition. Staff will discuss this condition in more details later. Similarly, staff modified Condition Approval Number 54 regarding allowing flexibility to provide the voluntary residential parking spaces as allowed by the municipal code. Staff made minor clarifications to Condition Approval Number 46 and 119 regarding food service facilities and responsible beverages service training. Staff also made minor clarifications to Condition Approval Number 69 and 92 regarding roadway improvements. The changes for Condition Approval Number 132 regarding mitigation measure noise 1.1 were vetted with the city's noise consultant and are only applicable to projects that have adjacency with other lots. Since this project is surrounded by the public right-of-way, bullet point D is no longer necessary. Staff has completed public noticing for tonight's meeting in accordance with all public noticing requirements, including noticing neighbors within 1,000 feet of the project site and those on the interested parties list. More than 2,000 residents, businesses, and interested parties have been notified of tonight's meeting. A placard was also placed on the project site. Staff has received approximately 19 public comment letters as of date, most of which express support of maintaining a full-service grocery store. Staff has included a Condition Approval prioritizing leasing the space to a grocery store and requiring proof of a good-faith effort to do so prior to teneting to another retail use for the proposed grocery store size of 17,000 square feet, which is consistent with other smaller grocery stores such as Drager's and Los Altos. There were also concerns regarding noise, traffic, and other environmental impacts. The project has been conditioned and includes mitigation measures to offset such impacts. All of the public comments have been forwarded to the Planning Commission. One discussion topic staff wanted to raise tonight is regarding residential parking spaces. As mentioned earlier, the state density bonus law does not require residential parking spaces due to the project proposal of 100% low-income units and location within half a mile of public transit. However, since these units are proposed to meet the commercial linkage fee requirements, the city has broader discretion in asking for amenities similar to those enjoyed by the other tenants of the building. Staff originally recommended providing 10 on-site parking spaces dedicated for the residential units. The applicant has agreed to provide six residential parking spaces but has identified challenges in meeting the municipal code's security closure requirements. The city's requirements mandate that residential parking spaces shall be secured and accessible only to residents. However, it does not take into account mixed-use spaces. Hence, staff has built in flexibility into the condition to require these spaces only if the security requirements or alternative means of compliance can be met. Staff is requesting the commission to provide input on the appropriate number of spaces requested. Tonight, staff recommends that the Plan Commission discuss and provide a recommendation regarding the residential parking space, and based on findings for approval and as conditioned, recommend to City Council adopt a resolution to approve the site plan and architectural review and site development planning application, approve the affordable housing plan, and adopt an addendum to the 2010 General Plan Environmental Impact Report and 2009 Downtown Area Specific Plan Initial Study Mitigated Negative Declaration under the California Environmental Quality Act. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff also wanted to note that this project will next be heard by the City Council for decision, which is tentatively scheduled for Thursday, December 1st, 7:00 p.m., pending tonight's decision. Staff is available to answer any questions the commission may have. With us tonight are Sue Ellen Atkinson and Mike Cato from the Public Works Department, and our environmental consultants, Akoni Danielson and Connor Totino from David J. Powers. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Wendy. At this time, can we have this, the applicant's presentation? And I think we're doing that by Zoom, right?
Yes, hi, everyone. This is Marcus Gilmore with Lane Partners. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Let me get my screen up, one second.
Sure. Like I said, I'm glad we have this Zoom option still for, I guess, from here on out.
All right, is the screen visible?
No, not yet.
Okay.
Okay, we see it now, East Street South.
Okay, great, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm Marcus Gilmore with Lane Partners. I apologize for not being there in person tonight. I'd like to first start off by thanking Wendy and Manera and all the city staff members that have been involved in this project. We've been working together on this project for close to three years now, and I just want to recognize the work that everyone has put in, especially in the last two months, to get us here tonight. It's been a huge lift, and I truly appreciate it. To Chair Williams, Vice Chair Ebner, and Commissioners Wiggins, Nugent, and Patel, thank you for this opportunity to present our project to you again with the goal of obtaining your recommendation for our City Council meeting on December 1st. I recognize that many things had to come together to make this meeting happen tonight, including shifting around of travel schedules. So again, thank you. Tonight, we'll cover project goals and history. It's been over a year since our study session, so we'll walk through some of the history of the project. We'll go over the project information. Wendy's covered a lot of it already. We'll then talk about the design and architectural components of the project, followed by community engagement. So when thinking about this project and the importance it has for downtown and the greater community, we believe it's important to communicate the overarching goals as we look to transform a very prominent entire city block in the downtown. So, number one, we intend to design a project that keeps a high-quality grocery store in the downtown. As long-term investors in the city, we believe this is critical, and the community hasn't been shy about conveying this to us. I read through most of the public comments prior to tonight's meeting, and I'd say over 80% of them were related to keeping a grocery store in the downtown. Number two, we want to design a project that provides much-needed workforce housing near transit and amenities. Existing zoning, as Wendy pointed out, allows us to just pain in lieu fee. But in hearing from staff and the community, we know it's important to provide housing where it's physically possible, and so we're doing that with this project. Number three, we want to design a project that acknowledges the downtown environment that's within the existing character, yet is also attractive for future generations, really trying to create a bridge between that historic and modern design. Four, we believe it's important to design a project that can attract local businesses to grow and flourish within San Mateo. These businesses are key in supporting the downtown retailers, and this is actually mentioned in the Downtown Area Plan when discussing the benefits of office located near transit and amenities. Finally, we'd like to create a project that improves and energizes the public realm through wide sidewalks, curated planning zones, and a large community plaza. This slide summer, this slide summarizes the project timeline and the various milestones we've achieved to date. We submitted our first pre-application back in May of 2020, and in fact, I've got emails from Ron Munacawa on this project dating back to December of 2019. So as you can see, we've been at this for a long time, and it's required a solid partnership with staff to work through the many complex with staff to work through the many complexities of developing a full-city block, including multiple months spent on designing the bike lane on B Street, which was ultimately removed. Next, I'll quickly cover the proposed uses of the project, which Wendy covered. I'll go through these quickly. So the ground floor is approximately eighteen thousand square feet, and it's, it's been designed for a full-service grocer with the loading zone and the back-of-house areas close to the loading zone, the entrance on fourth, and the access points off at the corners. The office use is around a hundred and five thousand square feet. That's located on floors two through four, and there's a roof deck on the fifth floor. The workforce housing is at ten units at the eighty percent AMI level. It's comprised of eight one-bedrooms and two studios. The units will have a dedicated lobby, dedicated laundry room, dedicated bike parking, and a pretty cool roof deck. We're partnering with Alta Housing on the affordable housing. I believe Cheryl Klein, who's the chief operating officer of Alta, is there tonight. Should you have any questions about their involvement in the project? Here, I'd like to highlight some additional information on the, on the housing. So B Street South will be the only private mixed-use project to provide a hundred percent affordable units. It would take sixty-seven market-rate units to generate ten affordable units at the fifteen percent level. City code through the downtown area plan requires that we provide eight units onsite or pay the commercial linkage fee of around two-point-eight million. We're providing ten units at a cost of around seven, seven million. The project does not seek additional office FAR through the density bonus law. As Wendy mentioned, there's a pathway to add additional office square footage through the, through the state's density bonus law. We're not pursuing, pursuing those paths. We're just using the height above fifty-five feet to provide for the affordable units. This image, which is focused on the northwest corner of Fourth and Ellsworth, does a nice job of breaking down the various uses and entry points to the project. The retail entrance will face Fourth Ave and have wide sixteen-foot sidewalks in compliance with the pedestrian master plan. The office lobby will be located on Ellsworth. The residential lobby will have a dedicated entrance on B Street, which is not shown here. And as you move up the building, the massing steps back at the third level, and it continues up to the fifth floor where we've located the office and residential roof decks along with the units themselves and all the mechanical equipment, which, when you have three uses and you've got a commercial kitchen with all the exhaust required for a grocer, for a grocer and the office and residential, the mechanical penthouse is quite robust. Here's the floor plan. Wendy covered this, so we can, we can move on, but just quickly point out the garage entry is off of the, the residential lobby off the office entrance off of, off of Ellsworth, and of course, the, the future grocery space facing fourth. This is the floor plan of the residential floor. The units are shown in the awkward color here, and then there's the dedicated roof deck for the residents facing B Street. This is a conceptual rendering of the roof deck looking north. The goal here is to create a space where the residents can work, socialize, and enjoy the scenic views. Moving on to the building architecture, this is a view of the building from the vantage point of being in the public plaza on Fourth and Ellsworth. We really like this image. We think it does a great job of portraying the potential activation at the ground plane and expressing the historical tones of the architecture through the cornice detail and the recessed paneling in the brick facade. We're also excited about the wood molyan system. We think that adds a nice touch. And then the large column, which we'll get into in a minute here, was changed from wood to concrete per, per comments from, from the commission. This is a view from Fourth Ave looking at the grocery store entrance. This is a view of the third-floor office area. One thing we're excited about is we, we're going to go ahead and build this project using a mass timber structural system, which is much more environmentally friendly when compared to steel and concrete. And depending on when we can get our building permits, B Streets, B Street South could be the first mass timber project in the city. This slide summarizes some of the sustainability features of a CLT project. I won't go through all of these, but I'd like to highlight a few. U S and Canadian forests grow approximately one hundred and seventeen thousand cubic feet of mass timber in nine minutes. By using mass timber, the project will avoid eleven hundred metric tons of CO2, which is the equivalent of removing eight hundred and sixty-two cars off the road for a year and enough energy to operate four hundred and thirty-one homes in a year. I wanted to briefly walk through some of the design changes that have been made over the past two years. As a reminder, our first submittal back in 2020 did not contain any housing, but after meeting with staff and the public, we decided to add the housing. We presented that plan to Larry, Larry Cannon. He provided comments. We updated the plan, and that is reflected here. So this image, what you see here, is what you all reviewed in September of last year. During that study session, we took notes and responded accordingly to your comments, and we'll walk through how we responded in these next slides. So number one, we changed the wood columns at the ground floor to concrete. We introduced recessed panels in the brick columns to add more depth to the facade. We recessed the center bays on the third and fourth floors to break up the massing. We widened the B Street sidewalk, and we added street trees to improve the pedestrian experience. This is a view of the Fourth Avenue elevation. The arrows call out the changes that were made in direct response to your comments. You see the center bay here is set back, the recessed panels in the brick, and then the concrete column versus the wood. This is the B Street elevation. This isn't a great view, but the B Street sidewalk is, is going to be sixteen feet wide with trees and the curated planning zones. And then, of course, the recessed bays follow all the way around the building with the panels here in the concrete columns. I added this image to the deck because we've seen this project referenced positively several times over the past year or so, as we followed various projects around town and have watched several planning commission meetings. People seem to like this project in Redwood City, which is nice to hear because this is our project. And we've enlisted the same architect, KSH, to design the project that is before you tonight. The historic brick facade you see here was the inspiration for our design, and while our brick will have a different color tone, the quality will be the same. As I wrap, wrap up here, it's important to highlight the community outreach efforts we put in place on this project. The website that we established was launched in June of 2020. We've had over four thousand unique visitors and close to four hundred comments with a ninety percent positive or neutral response. Courbanize, the company that we've partnered with to help manage the website, has shared that this has been one of their most active projects in terms of community engagement. And I don't know if you've had a chance to skim through the site, but I would think the level of engagement hasn't been seen on any project in the downtown like we have for this project. So I recommend this project to city council. We're committed to keeping a grocery store in downtown. We're providing low-income units onsite more than what is required. The project team has responded to planning commission design comments. Architectural language is historic with modern elements. The project will be environmentally friendly via the mass timber structure. The project will fix the awkward one-way street configuration on Ellsworth, which I didn't talk about before, but hopefully that's self-explanatory. And then the project will improve the pedestrian experience. So with that, again, thank you to staff for all the hard work on this project and the commission for allowing us to have this special meeting tonight. That concludes our presentation, and our team is here to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you so much for your presentation, Marcus. I think at this time, I would like to see if any of the planning commissioners have any questions for the applicant or for staff. Commissioner Wiggins?
Thank you. I have a number of questions.
Okay.
I will, let me first thank staff for all their work pulling this together. And before I go into questions and the interest of transparency, I just want to disclose that I'm professionally acquainted with members of the applicant's consultant team and actually was employed years ago by one of the consultants back when I was a landscape architect. Outstanding those professional connections, I can and will remain unbiased and neutral as I evaluate the project. I also visited the site. I'm there probably every week. I met with the applicant, and I did visit that Drager's location in Los Altos that was mentioned. So that out of the way, I have two questions for the applicant and then a handful for staff. Quick clarifications to the applicant. If you're driving in to the basement to park and go into the grocery store, it wasn't clear, actually, do walk back to the stair that's kind of at Fifth and B and go up? Just want to make sure I understood that kind of practical part.
Yeah, so that's, that's what we have now, Martin. And once we land on the final design with the grocer, I anticipate that there will be elevators that go from the inside of the retail space down to the garage. But that design has not been finalized yet. So for now, yes, we're utilizing the elevator that's at the corner of B and Fifth.
Okay, thank you. And one more, do you, have you signed a lease with Drager's yet?
No, we have not signed a lease with Drager's. We have a signed letter of intent, and we're currently negotiating a lease, but it's not signed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, on to staff. One question that just came up as I was hearing mention of the mass timber. Did the project EIR assume mass timber when it was being studied? The addendum?
I don't believe so, but I could also ask Oconee O'Connor if they're familiar with noting that material in the EIR.
Good evening, Chair, members of the commission. This is Oconee Danielson, David J. Powers Associates. I don't believe that specific project detail was provided to us, so no.
Okay, thanks. I'll make the observation, if it's built-in mass timber, you probably would see a decrease in your impacts based on that, but I'm not an expert. Okay, grocery questions. A lot of talk about the size of full-service groceries. How does this eight, about eighteen thousand square feet, seventeen-five, how does it compare to other grocery stores in San Mateo?
Can I have just a second to look up some information?
Through the chair, I actually have that in my notes from the study session, if you want me to read from my notes.
Oh, throw out a few, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, I asked the same question in the study session. So this, at least as of the study session, this project was proposing seventeen thousand six hundred and fifty-eight square feet of grocery. The Trader Joe's at Concar is approximately fifty-five hundred square feet. The Safeway at Seventeenth is approximately thirty-seven thousand five hundred square feet, and the previous Trag's was about fourteen thousand three hundred and twenty-eight square feet.
Okay, thank you. And one more, just related to groceries. There was some public comment about the Safeway on Seventeenth. That reminded me of a city council meeting, actually, they mentioned it on April eighteenth. Is there, just want to confirm, there's not a plan to take, take away the Safeway at Seventeenth? It looked like that was just discussion during the general plan of zoning the site?
That is correct. Staff is not aware of any proposal or approval to demolish the existing Safeway at Seventeenth for a new development proposal.
Okay, thank you. Couple on housing. In terms of a target unit mix for affordable housing, does the city have any adopted policies today on what sort of affordable units that developers should prioritize, like seniors, family housing, et cetera?
None that are adopted yet.
No, okay, thank you. Questions on parking, but I think that's actually is getting clarified. And those actually are all my questions. Thank you.
Through the chair, if I could chime in, Manera Santhi, your planning manager. My understanding is that the Trader Joe's is slightly larger. I know Commissioner Patel read out some numbers, and I believe, you know, at that point, we may not have had the full information. So my understanding is it's definitely larger than ten thousand square feet, but I don't have the exact number, and I'm hoping Wendy can, can pull that up.
I don't think you said ten thousand square feet. You said?
Fifty-five hundred.
Fifty-five hundred.
Yeah.
Oh, fifty-five hundred, okay, got it.
Right, so it, so it is larger than fifty-five hundred, and my understanding is it's actually a little bit over ten thousand square feet, but we can pull up the exact number if there are further questions.
So I just want to clarify that. So the project Drager, the project proposed has space for eighteen thousand square feet, and the Trader Joe's is over ten thousand square feet. So, okay, thank you. Okay, are there any other questions from any other commissioners? Because I'm just going to row.
Yes, through, through the chair. I've got a couple of questions about the density bonus law. And so I just, this is for staff. Again, I want to say thank you to staff and for all the work that you've done preparing this, this big package. The, the density bonus law is, is set up to encourage the development of subsidized affordable units. On, at first glance, as just a layperson, it seems strange that this project is applicable to the density bonus law. Can you just, can somebody explain how, whether or not residential percentage of a project matters for density bonus law? If that is, if that is a thing? Or if any project that has even one unit is, becomes a density bonus law potential candidate? Is that, is that the case?
Manera, are you gonna?
I'm happy to start.
Okay.
Commissioner Nugent, so the, this project is subject to the density bonus requirements because it is proposing a hundred percent affordable project. I forget exactly what the threshold is for density bonus requirements. I suspect it may be five units or greater, but again, it, it does not preclude a mixed-use project from availing itself of the density bonus concessions and waivers. And currently, the city does not have any requirement that a certain percentage of any mixed-use project has to be residential. So, so it is allowed to have, the applicant is within their rights to request waivers and concessions and other requests under the density bonus laws. They're proposing a hundred percent low-income residential project.
Thank you, thank you. And this is a follow-on question for the applicant. So in the presentation, it mentioned that the office space was not increasing FAR through the density bonus law and that it only applied to the residential. Is that, is that correct? Is that what I was hearing? That this density bonus law only applies to the residential mass and space?
Yeah, so to be more specific, we have about three feet of the, of the fourth floor of the office component that extends above the fifty-five feet, but there's no additional rentable square footage above that fifty-five feet for the office. So basically, we just have taller ceilings for the office on the fourth floor, but there's no additional rentable square footage for the office.
How does the mechanical space in the, on the top floor get factored into that, into that equation? Because it seems that that mechanical space is not meant for the residential portions of the building.
Could you clarify the question?
So on the, on the top floor, there is mechanical space, a significant amount relative to the number of residential units. And if the residential units were not there, what would become of that mechanical space? And is that mechanical space using the density bonus law? Because it seems like that is, to me, that is functioning for perhaps the grocery store or and/or the office space. I just want to know how that mechanical space applies.
Through the chair, perhaps I could take a step at addressing the, the code requirements. Through the chair, perhaps I could take a step at addressing the code requirements and the state law requirements. So the city's code, the height requirements do not apply to mechanical equipment. So that is perhaps where the equipment, whether it's associated with the commercial component or the residential component, it's exempt from the height requirements. I would also like to add that I know the applicant made a comment about the FAR, the office FAR, not utilizing the density bonus, but there are other waivers that apply to the project as a whole, which is allowed under density bonus law. The density bonus requirements do not parse out commercial aspects of the project from the residential when looking at concessions and waivers. It looks at the project as a whole and whether, you know, those concessions and waivers are necessary to build the affordable units. And there are certain findings that have to be made to approve it.
Okay, thank you. My next question, just was to confirm that this is not a Housing Accountability Act eligible project. What legal protections or means would the project applicant have, perhaps against the city, if, say, the city council did not approve the project? Like, what, what, what would the project applicant do if, say, the, or what could the project applicant do if the city council did not approve this?
Ma- Maazarin, I'm looking to our city attorney, Assistant City Attorney, perhaps to take a stab.
Do you want to narrow that down because is there a particular...
Sure. I'm just curious, because I don't want to, I don't want to take, you know, say if, if there was some sort of finding that the city council looked, discovered or determined, did not, the project didn't meet in order to be approved, what would be the next step for the applicant? Would they have to maybe change something about the project to meet the finding? Would they, would the city be open to being sued? Is this, we're trying, I'm trying to figure out, you know, how to look at this comparison to our general plan, our zoning codes and such, and see, you know, just know above board, like, what is the flexibility that the city has to approve or deny a project like this?
I think litigation is always an option for an applicant who feels like the city council did not correctly make required findings, but unless you have a specific kind of path, I can't really answer that in detail.
And I would just add on, you mentioned design aspects or things that could possibly be changed. Just like the planning commission, the city council always has the option to continue something if they have concerns about a project. And so, it's not that common that we see things that just get denied outright. If there's room to modify a project to meet the findings, to approve the project, that is typically the path that is taken. And so, if the council had concerns, they could convey those to the applicant, and the applicant could return with a revised project. But I agree with Maazarin that if a project should be denied and the city thought that it was a wrongful, or the applicant thought it was a wrongful denial, their avenue would be to pursue it legally.
Okay, thank you. And then, I think I noticed in the packet, some fleshing out of conformance with the orderly, I'm sorry, orderly growth of the city or orderly development of the city. Is it possible that we can just look at what those additional stipulations that the staff has added, just so we can understand what, how that's interpreted? Is that a possibility that we can see that?
Are you asking about the modified conditions of approval?
It is, sorry, I've got a lot of stuff to go through. It is, I think it is the modified conditions of approval. It would be the aspect of the general plan where it conforms with balanced growth of the city. Sorry, I don't have it up in front of me, I'm going off of memory. And I just remember that there were, there was some additional information that staff provided, so we can better understand what that means or how that's interpreted as a commission.
Was it the conditions of approval or the findings?
It might be the findings, sorry, I don't have it up.
I can pull it up in just a second.
Okay, maybe we can come back to that? And then, just a quick question. So recently, the state removed parking requirements that the city can impose within a half-mile of a transit station. Are those, is that state law applicable to this yet? No? Besides that one, that was my last question.
Through the chair. Commissioner, were you referring to one of the findings in the site plan and architectural review regarding the development not being detrimental to the harmonious and orderly growth of the city?
Yes, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
What page is that on? Sorry.
14 and 15, or really more like 15.
Yep, I got it, okay. So, below that, the development is not, is not, will not be detrimental to the harmonious and orderly growth of the city in that, yeah, thank you, I just wanted to be able to see So it was page 15 of 1,204. Okay.
It's like item one.
Is this what you're looking for?
One B. One B.
Yeah.
I think it was the next.
Yeah, I think further down.
Is it the next page?
It's the next page.
One more. So, this, this B, letter B, the development will not be detrimental to the harmonious and orderly growth of the city in that the project provides retail, office, and residential uses at intensities that would complement existing commercial uses in the vicinity of the downtown core. The project is consistent with the general plan and zoning code, accepting standards modified via the state density bonus law. And the project is in substantial conformance with the downtown area plan, bicycle master plan, and pedestrian plan. So these, these three bullet points are helpful. I want to know from staff if those are the only things that we can consider as far as whether or not the development is or is not detrimental to the harmonious and orderly growth of the city, or if this is just a guide for us to understand what that, what that means, harmonious and orderly growth.
This, I would say this is just a guide based on some general plan policies and goals, but there could be more considerations if you'd like to discuss that.
Okay, okay, thank you. That's helpful. Those are my only questions.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Emmerich, do you have questions?
I do not at this time.
Commissioner Patel?
Through the chair, thank you. Again, thank you to staff for all of the work to get this project before us, before the end of the year. I know a lot went into making this happen. We always appreciate your, your work. I have a few questions, starting with the trees. The staff report notes that 38 of the 39 trees are protected. However, the EIR states that none of the 39 trees qualify as heritage trees under our heritage tree ordinance. So I was curious, what exactly makes 38 of the trees protected? Is it just because they're street trees?
I believe based on the municipal code's definition of a protected tree, yes, it now includes street trees, so that's why it's written as a protected tree.
Great, and I guess my next question is for the applicant, which is, given that, I believe the protected trees are street trees, what exactly is driving the need to remove and replace them? Noting that the project has asked for a setback and there's a widened sidewalk, so I'm curious why, why these trees need to be removed and replaced and why they couldn't be preserved?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I'm going to pass it to some of the team members here, but I would say that I believe the answer is, in order to comply with the pedestrian master plan and to create fresh, brand-new sidewalks with all the ADA compliance and various adjustments to the, the street lighting, those are some of the reasons why. Mark Newson or Patrick Webb, if you guys are on and available to weigh in, that'd be helpful.
Yeah, this is Mark Newson, Kieranite Civil Engineers. Mark, as you are correct, the new street alignment does not align with the existing street. The curb is typically moving into the street to align to the city requirements, and those don't align with any of the existing trees. So as we were pushing the curb into the street, the grades are being raised upwards of, you know, three to six inches. And aside from the grade, the existing trees don't align with the planters, planting strips where the new trees are going. So it was infeasible to protect those based on their vertical location as well as their horizontal location.
Thank you, that's super helpful. I have a follow-up question for you. Do you at this time have a specification for the size of the trees that will be used to replace the trees that are being removed?
Patrick, is that something that you could assist with?
Yeah, I can. Hey, Patrick Webb, Intercoastal and Landscape Architects. We are currently showing 36-inch box trees for all proposed trees.
Okay, great, thank you. And then my next question is for staff. Looking to our heritage tree ordinance, I know that it requires, might not be the right word. It talks about the desire to preserve protected trees, like street trees. Does anybody in, on staff have to approve or sign off on the replacement of protected trees? Like, does the arborist have to review and approve? What happens when an applicant wants to remove and replace protected trees from an approval standpoint?
The city staff, our city arborists, would review the proposal to remove the trees, and there are requirements to either replace the tree or to provide a fee in lieu for removing those trees.
Okay, so I assume that happened in this case, that the arborist has reviewed.
Yes, and more details may be required during the building permit stage.
Perfect. My next question, I think it was already answered. I noted the same thing, that in the applicant's presentation, there was a note that the project is using the height above 55 feet to provide housing, but I also noticed in one of the elevations that the 55-foot height limit seems to bisect the top story of the office space, but it sounds like it's just three feet of the office space that exceeds the 55-foot height limit. Is that correct?
Thanks for, thanks for the question. I think that's on average. The site has a pretty significant slope from Ellsworth down to B Street, so in some areas, it's as high as, I think, five feet. We could go to the plans and confirm, but it's somewhere in that, in that range.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I just wanted to generally get a sense of how much of that top office story was above the 55-foot height limit. And then, my last question was for our city attorney. The applicant submitted a letter about the density bonus law that essentially says, "The waivers and concessions that the applicant is requesting are assumed to reduce the cost of developing the housing." That the burden of proof is not on the applicant to prove that the waivers and concessions reduce the cost, rather, the burden of proof is on the city to prove that the waivers and concessions don't reduce the cost. I was curious if our city attorney agrees with the applicant's interpretation of case law.
We did review the density bonus letter, and we found it to be sufficient.
Okay, thank you. Those are all of my questions.
All right, thank you. I have, actually, I had a few questions, but some of them have been asked. Thank you to all of you. But I do have one question, and I tried to, I didn't quite understand it. So, it's about the residential parking, it's for staff. It was in your presentation. I don't understand the part about, maybe you can explain why 10 spaces were requested by staff and the applicant provided six for residential use? And maybe you can just explain that to me a little bit. There was a, I think there was a difference between eight and 10, and six were provided.
Sure. Staff requested 10 residential parking spaces because there are 10 residential units. The applicant has proposed six because they, I think that's what they feel comfortable providing. Even though there is a surplus of, I think, 13 parking spaces, they wanted to allow room during the building permit stage to allow for accommodating additional, let's say, utility rooms or other things they have not accounted for yet. I think the applicant might be able to speak more to that, but that was the reasoning for offering 10, oh, sorry, six residential parking spaces.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I don't know if the, maybe the applicant, maybe it should have been a question for the applicant.
Yeah, thank you for the, yeah, thank you for the question. So yeah, Wendy hit on one of the points, which is, you know, right now, we do show some extra stalls based on the parking demand study, but as I mentioned earlier, the grocery store design will have two large elevators that go down into the basement parking, and that will eat up, I don't know the exact number, I think it's around six or seven stalls, because you have to have an elevator lobby and have space for ADA access. So right there, those two elevators eat up some stalls in the basement, and that's on both levels. So on B1 and B2, you're losing stalls. And then, in addition to that, we need to accommodate a future generator for a potential office tenant, and so, just thinking about things like that. And then the final point on the parking for the residents, I'd just say that we completely appreciate the potential need for the workforce housing residents to have a place to park their cars. We understand that some of them work odd, odd hours, have multiple jobs, are commuting long distances, so we appreciate that. And so, what I'd say is we're willing to work with, with staff to find a solution here. We're not able to agree to providing stalls that comply with the, with the existing code language that requires all residential stalls have security provided to them, like a security gate, because it impacts the cost of the, of the project as well as the efficiency and the flow of the garage with three uses in the project. It's important that we keep the flow of the ins and outs of the various levels as streamlined as possible. And finally, I believe that the code language regarding the security gates only applies to residential projects. It does not contemplate mixed-use projects. I'll let staff weigh in on that, but that's my understanding. So, we're in a bit of uncharted waters here, but I will say that we're, we're open to working out a solution here that works for the project, the residents, and the city.
Isn't there a gate proposed on Fifth at the, at the surface parking? Is that not a security gate?
That is, yeah, there will be a security gate there.
So that would be security for all the parking?
So the way that the code is currently written, that security gate that would secure all parking doesn't meet the code for the residential parking security gate. So our code is very specific in that it requires a security gate only for the residential for, even if it's not dedicated residential, if it's for residential at all, it requires a separate security gate that only the tenants have access to, and that is closed off to everyone else at all times. And so it is a little bit of a, of a difficult standard to meet, and I would, you know, just mention that that code probably didn't contemplate the current legislative climate where residential uses are not required to provide parking, and so if they do so, it's voluntary. And so, it depends if it's the desire of the commission and the council to see the residential parking or the security gate, the way the code is currently written. If it's residential parking, then the security gate does need to be there. And so, there's an alternative means and methods section in our code as well that is also fairly precise. And so, we are looking at the... also fairly precise. And so we are looking at the, those codes in light of these new laws that are, that are, that are coming into play and how those interact with our land use and development projects. It does appear in looking at the code that it did not contemplate that they would be for, for, it, it appears that it's contemplated for multifamily, but not necessarily a mixed-use building.
So it's in flux still, and there is some leeway, and it's possible that 10, the 10 units could each have a parking space, but it's, I guess it's undetermined at this time. Or, or is there, what, what would be the avenue to provide that?
I think that, you know, as I mentioned, we need to look at these codes and see how they work with the current land use climate and the state legislation, and probably bring that up as a, as a policy discussion. And if those codes do happen to change between now and the time that this project is constructed, then they would have some more flexibility on the security aspect. It, it could be that, that there's a number of ways that that code could change, or it could stay the same, depending on the, the desire of the council at the time.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I do have one other question. So regarding the percent of frontage that's retail frontage, I don't, I'm not sure if it was in there or not, but what is the current Drager's building on B Street? Whatever, I mean, it's kind of not comparable because you've got, Ellsworth is different, but B Street, I guess, what is the comparison of the existing and the proposed retail frontage? Does anyone know? Does the applicant know?
I mean, it's, it's all retail, right?
Yeah, the whole, the whole block, the whole block is really the Drager's building.
I, I'm talking about the, the frontage. Let me look at, what's the terminology?
Do you mean sort of active frontage, like, like glass storefront?
Right, I thought we were going from 75% required to 54%, if I remember, that's the number. And that, I was wondering how that compares to the current Drager's, because the current Drager's has a similar non-active storefront elevation or facade along B Street.
Staff didn't analyze the existing Drager's market, but I would believe that the Fourth Avenue frontage would comply. I don't believe the rear or the sides might, just due to the existing conditions, due to the existing garage openings, things like that.
Okay. All right, thank you. That's all the questions I have. Do you have questions?
One question on the traffic analysis, executive summary. I was curious with the reduction in daily trips that is presented by the replacement of the Drager's store. So we've got, the existing store is said to be 60,965 square feet, and the new proposed store is roughly, I think, 17,000 square feet. So how did you determine the existing site, the existing store of that square footage? Is the ground floor and the second floor, and are they both of the same use with the same traffic analysis applied?
To determine the existing square footage, staff looked at the previous permit history. So that's how we arrived at the 60,000 square foot number.
Okay, so the ground floor I know at Drager's is all grocery store. And so this must be the combination of the ground floor and the second floor.
Correct.
So what is the major use of the second floor? I know there's a restaurant up there. Is there expanded grocery store up there also?
It's retail upstairs. I believe the restaurant, which was a small portion of the upstairs, has since been closed during the pandemic. So it's mostly retail upstairs.
Okay, so if I understand the, the traffic report correctly, the, or if I'm reading it correctly, it, it looks like we're only talking about the existing, the existing grocery store in comparison to the possible new grocery store. And then the commercial component is not part of the transportation analysis because of its location to a major trains, or a major transit hub through CEQA, or is it included?
Through the chair, my understanding is all the uses would have been included in the, in the trip generation calculation, and that is tied to the LOS analysis that is necessary for general plan compliance. That's the level-of-service LOS analysis. And then also to ensure that there are no traffic safety issues that arise under CEQA. Under the California Environmental Quality Act, the additional layer of analysis that was done for this project was for the vehicle miles traveled, so VMT, was also factored in for all of the different uses. So I wouldn't say that, you know, the trip analysis only included the reduced grocery use. It included the grocery use and the commercial use and the residential uses, all of the mixed-use components of the project. And I, I welcome our Public Works staff, Mike Cato, or our David J. Powers staff, Acony or Connor, to please chime in if I, if I misspoke in any way.
Through the chair, this is Acony Danielson, David J. Powers, so just again, public work staff would like to speak. Yeah, just, there is a table in the initial study that was prepared, the addendum. It's a table 4.17-1, and it is the project trip generation estimates. And so it does take into account the different components of the project. The retail component, which is about 17 and a half thousand square feet, is predicted to generate 1,891 daily trips. The office space is predicted to generate 1,208 daily trips. And then the housing unit portion is generating, is generating on average about 38 trips per day for a combined total of 2,904. That's the estimate based upon the proposed uses. The existing market is estimated to produce on the order of 6,549, so more than twice the proposed project trips.
Thank you. That was my only question at this point.
Okay, great. Thanks for all your questions. That was very detailed questions. So at this time, we can go ahead and open it up for public comment. So can you give us a tally of how many public speakers there are, Ashley, from Zoom and in-person?
Chair Williams, right now, we have two in-person and four in Zoom, but I expect there will be a few more.
Okay, it looks like we have several more. So we'll give you a second to count up those.
be?
Let's make it two minutes, and we'll try to really stick to that so we can be sure to hear everyone's comments. And yeah, we can go ahead and get started.
Chair Williams, our first speaker is in-person, Richard Drager. You can come up to the microphone.
Hi, glad to be here tonight, and thank you for all the hard work. I, I would like to, in fact, thank Lane Partners, because they have really worked very tirelessly for over two years with me to design a grocery store. So I, I know there's been some question as, as far as the size of the grocery store and how practical the grocery store happens to be. And it mimics what we've, in fact, been very successfully operating at our Los Altos location for, oh my gosh, since 1986. So we worked tirelessly, again, with Marcus Gilmore, and we created a flex parking arrangement in the garage, and it's based upon our surge that occurs during the holidays. So there's a lot of aspects of this project that I do happen to love. We've operated in San Mateo, obviously, for 25 years, but before that, I was a kid and went to the Levy Brothers store at the site. So I know this site from childhood. And I think that this is a vast improvement to the downtown, because it makes sense given demands for the space in the downtown and how expensive real estate happens to be for all of us operators. So this shares that occupancy cost quite well. Beyond that, I'd also say that I, I like the amenities that it's created in the form of the plaza. I, I think it's a much more attractive and activating development for the town. And overall, I just have to say again, thank you to the San Mateo community. We may not have a lease, as you know. However, we know San Mateo very, very well, and the support of the downtown has been tremendous, and we appreciate all of you guys. Thank you.
All right, thanks for your comments. We can have the next speaker.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Daniel Schaefer. Daniel, you can come up to the microphone.
Hi, thank you. The presenter from the project said, quote, that the, the design is a bridge between historic and modern design. And I wish that were true. It looks almost identical to the building that's going up on Kelly Williams. It's, looks almost identical to the building that's going, that went up on Fourth and the office building there. It looks almost identical to the proposed design on Third and Railroad. It looks almost identical to the building that's going to go up where the Aaron Brothers was. This seems to be what I refer to as the Minecraft aesthetic of straight lines, brick and glass. And I see nothing that connects it to the historical downtown that at least I and others appreciate. And I would very much like to hear the commission's response to that, because the aesthetics are just jarring and identical and copy and paste. And I would expect a lot more from designers or architects in the 21st century. So I don't know what the format is for this dialogue, but I'm getting the impression from your looks that it's not now, or here.
Right, it's not a dialogue at this point. It's an opportunity for you to provide comments, and we'll take note of them.
How is that dialogue continued in the future for other projects?
We'll take note of your comments, and then we will then provide our comments at the end of all the public comments.
What I'm hearing is that this has to be taken up with city council then. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Next speaker, Ashley.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Edward Dumke. Edward, you can come up to the microphone.
Thank you. I was born in Mills Hospital in 1946, and so I've lived in San Mateo almost all my life, except for a few years. And I'm very concerned about the architecture, and I love my city. I was very active in trying to save Old St. Matthews on the corner of Third and Ellsworth, and we lost that battle. And I've enjoyed going to Drager's for years. We meet there every Sunday and often during the week. And I was a little bit concerned coming down here to see what the architecture was going to be. And I was very, I must say, I'm sorry I disagree with the previous speaker, but I thought the architecture was beautiful. And I'm really glad that you have some housing for senior citizens and so forth. So I just wanted to make that comment. I thought that, again, the architecture, and I'm very sensitive to architecture. I've studied it all my lives. Not an architect, but I'm interested in it. My one plea to Mr. Drager would please, oh, he's gone. Please remain, yeah, keep the coffee shop. That's someplace we go enjoy. Thank you.
All right, thanks for your comments. Next speaker.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is David Cohen. David, you can come up to the microphone.
Chair and commissioners, thank you for this moment or two. My name is David Cohen. I'm a resident of San Mateo. And although I am a founding member of Ethic San Mateo, I'm speaking only as an individual tonight. I have a concern about this project. As exciting as this kind of change is, and revitalization, more great things to happen, first of all, I'm concerned the small amount of time, limited amount of time, we have had to review this project, as the package only came out of yesterday, the, the day before, excuse me. Is that enough time to really have enough comments and enough study by the residents of San Mateo? It's my first comment. My second one is, how do I say this? Ethics is the cornerstone of good city governance. This planning commission, I believe, has a huge crack in its structure. That crack puts into doubt the ability of this commission to make decisions according to law and to good ethical standards and the good of the community. We all know about, quote, Sign Gate. It is now in the hands of the district attorney. We don't know what the outcome will be. But until the outcome is known, we would like to see Commissioner Nugent be suspended from all activities about this project because of doubt of his judgments. We believe the residents of San Mateo are deserving of ethical governance. Please give it to us. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Chair Williams, our next in-person speaker is Lori Watanuki, and the two speakers after that are going to be Lori Heater and Linda Sim, Simmison. But Lori, you can come up to the microphone.
It's okay, you don't need to run. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Lori Watanuki. Larry Cannons is the design consultant. He gave some excellent recommendations, and I think these recommendations should be followed. I have a question on traffic in the addendum to the EIR. What percent of the trips will be coming from 101? And what percentage, percentage will be coming from El Camino on this project? Page 351, the report states that Fifth Avenue is an east-west, two-to-three-lane arterial road extending from Virginia down to Amphlet on the east side. Arterial, arterial roads link residential and commercial districts and serve shorter through-traffic needs. In the vicinity of the project, Fifth Avenue has two lanes. The road is directly adjacent to the project and is proposed to provide direct access. This is a very broad statement, could present a safety issue for Fifth Avenue residents from Delaware to Amphlet. On page 1161, there is a small chart that shows that Fifth Avenue is a local street between Delaware to South Amphlet, and it mentions it's a Class 3 bike route in the report, but leaves out it will be a bike boulevard from Delaware to South Amphlet. It should not be used as a cut-through route for commercial traffic, truck traffic, or used as a construction route for trucks. This has been a problem in the past, and we do need mitigation for the local street. And I wish this could be included in the condition. And I wish this could be included in the condition of approvals. There are many mixed feelings about this new project. And I am concerned about the, that the imbalance of housing has not been addressed. And during this two-year period, during construction, there will not be a full-service grocery store within walking distance. Thursday is not a regular commission day, and too many large projects are being scheduled.
Your time is up.
We need more time to review the documents. And I do feel that it should be continued. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Lori Heater. And our speaker afterwards would be Linda Simmson. Lori, you can go ahead.
Thanks. Good evening, commissioners, Madam Chair. I have comments about the project and about the addendum of projects on the, the comments on the project. Need more housing and less office space. I don't know if everyone's counted this up, but we have over 800,000 square feet of office space that is approved and proposed or in process. That's a lot of office space. I'm concerned about not having a grocery store downtown. A lot of the seniors in the area and the whole city depends on Drager's. Just go there at Thanksgiving. I'm concerned that the building design just really doesn't fit. It doesn't blend with anything nearby, except it is a bit of a follow-on from some of the previous projects. So I agree with Lori that the Cannon Design Group has some good recommendations. I had a real problem with the addendum because I'm concerned about all these buildings and all this construction. There are six projects that have been recently approved, and there are going to be six projects under construction. And I didn't see that those projects were considered in the cumulative analysis or in the traffic analysis. It was very difficult to understand that. I was looking for the cumulative scenario. And I was wondering if the city has prepared a schedule of all the projects. And I think that should be included in the addendum. Because you can't do an appropriate analysis if you don't know what the conditions are. This affects air, noise, traffic. And some of the toxic air contaminants were getting pretty high. And so if you combine six projects, that'll be an issue. So I request that the addendum be revised to more clearly state what the assumptions are for the traffic and the construction scenarios for all the projects going downtown. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your comments. Okay, next speaker, please.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Linda Simmson. Come to the microphone.
Hi, welcome.
Hello. Hi. Thank you so much to the commission. Some of the points that I was going to make have been made. I think what Lori just said, it is a sort of overwhelming amount of building and construction that is happening in a very small area near downtown. I live in the central neighborhood, go to Drager's pretty much every day. And it is a huge amount of building. And I do think in terms of the current needs, the planning's been going on for a couple of years, which is great, takes a while to develop these. But the whole environment around office space needs, with people remote working, you know, what is the analysis of the likely capacity? You know, San Francisco is currently looking at a 50% vacancy. And I'm sure the developers want to be fully, you know, full, have full capacity in their rentals. But this, we're having this huge amount, as Lori just mentioned, of office space being developed at a time when the office space needs have declined dramatically. And I think that really should be looked at as, as is talked about in terms of the housing, office, you know, ratio. And in terms of workforce housing, and this is, you know, this looks like a nice development in terms of the way it looks and all of that. But again, having 10, either one bedroom or a couple of studios. There's no families. There'll be no children. There'll be possibly less than one car per apartment. That's not the type of folks in our city that really need affordable housing. You know, maybe, yes, maybe there are some that need that. But I really hope that if there's 10 affordable units, there are 10 parking places. People who are, you know, be able to be in an affordable space can't be Uber and lifting everywhere. That's what the tech workers do, not the essential workers, not the people that need to get their kids over to school and take their kids to two different schools and get to their job. They need a place to park. So wave the security fence, or they're going to be walking a lot further to park, and it won't be safe. So anyway, I just think those things need to be considered. Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thanks. Who do we have next?
Chair Williams, our next speakers will be via Zoom. Ben Chang is next. Go ahead and unmute yourself. Ben, you can go ahead and unmute now.
Hi, can you hear us? We can't hear you. Should we go on to the next person? We'll give just one more try, I guess. Can you hear us? I guess let's go on to the next person and come back to them.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Dan. Dan, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear us?
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you. Well, I just wanted to say I've been following this project, I think since the first meeting where, you know, thank you again to the council and members of the commission for, I think, really challenging the developer, seeing where I think this originally started and where it's ended up. You know, all but Drager's being a sure thing to come back to our, to our community is so important. I'm a lifetime resident, now a father here in this community with three kids. At Drager's, I think, as one of the other folks said, you know, almost every day, my wife or myself or my mother-in-law or my parents. That happens for centuries forever. The time thing is moving there, but in the current condition. And certainly, the streets, the sidewalk, the plaza. I mean, I'm there on my bike with my kids, you know, once a weekend. And seeing the improvement that's going to take place there, I think, is really great. I think currently, it's really just set up for kind of drive-in, drive-out. It's kind of hectic there in that little intersection always. And having this, this new, this new look, this new place to be, to sit down and have a sandwich outside there is just really exciting. I think it just looks like much more of a pedestrian-friendly environment. And I'm really excited to see downtown continue to evolve. I wasn't originally going to comment on the revised architecture. I think they said CLT, which is a wood look and feel, it sounds like. And, you know, I don't think I've ever seen one, but I'm, the renderings look out of this world. I believe the city is attacking the need for more housing with general plan. So I think future, you know, this is a really good starting point as you start to see some of these mixed-use buildings in our downtown. I believe I was on a call years ago with one of the ones that are existing today in downtown that's got 10 or 12 units upstairs. And I think it's, it's the way of the future.
Dan, I'm going to have to cut you off, Dan, because your time is up.
That's fine. Thank you all.
All right. Thanks for your comments. Okay, who's next?
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Steve Siriani. Steve, you can go ahead and unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Hi, we can hear you. Go right ahead.
Great. Well, thank you, Planning Commission and staff. You guys do a lot of yeoman's work there with listening to everybody and all the work going into this. Because like the last speaker, I have been following this for, you know, pretty much since its inception. And I agree, the evolution of the, the design, I think, is, is really great. I do, you know, think a lot of these older buildings in San Mateo are just, you know, obviously, everybody's opinion here, but I think they are old and tired and rundown-looking. So having some of these new buildings going up, including this Drager site, I think it looks fabulous. So kudos for, you know, lane partners, listening to, you know, staff and the commission and the public on changing it. And I, you know, I've lived in the area for 30 years and have business down there. We employ a lot of, you know, the 20, excuse me, like the $20 an hour, 25. So somewhere between $40,000 and $60,000 a year. A lot of younger, a lot of Hispanic employees, over 500 at one point before COVID. And they really need housing. Many of them come from the East Bay and really contribute to the traffic. And most of our business is on the peninsula. So the more low-income housing we can get, the better. And I applaud lane partners for doing that. And, you know, basically, the city and the state for pushing forward on those. So I really appreciate everybody. And I'm so happy that Drager's is coming back. They're a staple in the community, and I'm really glad they're coming back. So thank you all. I appreciate it.
All right. Thanks so much for your comments.
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Peggy Mendelson. Peggy, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear us? I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Just quickly, I am a resident of the Gramercy. I'm not the oldest person in the building by any means, but I've been here just about the longest. So I bought into the Gramercy 28 years ago when Levy's Department Store was still there, that ugly green building. I was thrilled when Drager's came. I would be very sad if they left. I think that more and more people in our building and the three buildings around us are no longer driving. And I'm very concerned about them being able to get fresh food every day. And not everyone knows how to order and have Lyft deliver or Amazon deliver their food. So I'm thrilled with the project. I think the little plaza is going to add a lot to our environment. The only concern I have about the project that isn't positive is that I think we need some concern by the city during all of the chaos of the next five years when we have six buildings going up around us. We need to make sure we have some traffic control. The sidewalks are a mess. There are lots of raised areas where people with walkers or strollers can trip. So some extra concern needs to be done during that project period. And otherwise, I am thrilled that Drager's may or hopefully will come back. And it will really help maintain the values of our lovely building and our neighborhood. Thank you.
All right. Thanks for your comments. Do we have any other public speakers?
Yes, Chair Williams, we have three more public speakers.
Okay, great.
Our next speaker is Ryan Modashemi. Ryan, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Good evening, Planning Commission, Chair Williams. Thanks for the opportunity to address you today. My name's Ryan Modashemi. I am a team lead with Move San Mateo, a bicycle and active transportation advisory group, advocacy group in the city. But I'm speaking on behalf of myself and myself alone. I first want to say that I think that it's great that this project does include housing. I do wish that it included more housing. And I, although I do respect that, you know, the developer was, you know, essentially following, following the rules, right? In the sense of following the zoning and what, based on state laws, they could or couldn't provide. And that's my understanding of what's happening. And I think that, just as, you know, myself, I'm going to be thinking about how I can advocate at the city level for policies to be adjusted to incentivize the creation of more housing relative to office space. I don't think that's something that can be adjudicated project by project or should be. It should be done at a city, city level, and I look forward to working on that. And I do thank the, the developer, Mr. Gilmore, for reaching out to me to, you know, discuss active transportation while I think that we disagreed on the merits of different kinds of facilities. And while I think that the project itself and, you know, decisions by the city council have led to less safety of a street or for bicyclists and arguably pedestrians. I'm, you know, I, I respect that that was the process, and I look forward to being engaged in the future. I think that it's good to have a redevelopment of the building site and that, that there's going to be, you know, Drager's downtown. I wish there was more housing, but I look forward to continued conversations in the future on how our policies can better incentivize the outcomes that we want in the city. You.
Thank you for your comments. Okay. Who do we have next?
Chair Williams, our next speaker is Cam Palmer. Cam, you can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear us?
Hi there. Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I'll keep this very brief because I know it's a long late night for you guys. But my name is Cameron Palmer. I've been a longtime resident of San Mateo over two decades. Grew up going to Drager's with my family and love, you know, the vision for this redevelopment. I love that Drager's stayed at the project. I think that's key, as many of the commenters or citizens mentioned before. I think that's key to the success of this, this project. And I think it's key to many of the folks that live directly and nearby downtown. So I'm excited to see them stay. I actually love the design of the project. I don't know what parts of kind of old downtown other, other commenters were focused on. But I think it's a variety of different designs over time. And this is very much in keeping with the current design of where the world sits today. And that's how, you know, downtowns change over time. So I, I love the, the design. I'm excited to see the mass timber project. I think like one of the other guys was saying, it's exciting to see a new building design come to San Mateo. So anyways, I think it's, it's a great add to the project or to the downtown. I'm excited at the city's, you know, change over the coming years. I think that's good for San Francisco, which should be open, or for the Bay Area, we should be open for more change. So anyways, I just wanted to throw my support behind the project and leave it at that. Thank you for the time.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our last speaker is Norman Cohen. Norman, you can go ahead and unmute. Norman, you can unmute now.
Hi, can you hear us? We can't hear you. Is this where we should mention again, press star six to unmute? Press star six? Oh, well. Okay. Well, I guess we will have to move on. Okay, so if there's no further speakers? I hate to, I hate to lose a speaker, but I think we gave it, I think we tried. I don't know if it's that same person that tried earlier or...
Chair Williams, we currently don't have any more speakers.
Okay. All right, great. Okay, at that, we will, we will close the public comment period, and we will move on to planning commissioner deliberation. So, oh, actually, I wanted to ask if the applicant wanted to provide, they have an opportunity for a five-minute follow-up? Answer any questions or follow-up on anything that has come up? And that would be the applicant or, I don't know about, I guess it would just be the applicant.
Yes, thank you. Not, not at this time.
Okay. All right, great. So then I think we can go ahead and get started. Is there anyone that wants to go first? We need to come up with a system for...
Through the chair?
Yes.
I don't know if staff had any questions or answers to any of the questions from the public. I did note that Lori Watanuki was concerned about where the trips were coming from and if that was addressed. The next speaker was talking about the commutative effects of the project. And I think Linda was talking about the how... was talking about the hou- housing to jobs in balance. Does this, does staff have any comments on the public's questions?
I believe that Mike can speak to the questions about the traffic study.
Yes, hi, this is Mike Cato, Associate Engineer of City San Mateo, Department of Public Works. I think the question that was asked was related to the percentage, where the percentage of vehicles for the, the project are going to be coming from, and specifically how many are coming from 101. There are four figures in the travel demand appendix, there are figures two through five in the, in the travel demand menu, memo, which show the, where the percentage trips are going to come from, are expected to come from both with the existing project and in for the projected project. And those are both for the, and there's four of them, because it's both for the AM and the PM. And I'm going to go right to those right now, so that maybe I could read you some of those. So I think if we were talking about, the question was about the, the projects, I won't go through the existing one. The consultant found that for, on a weekday, AM peak period, there are about 41% of the trips are going to come up Fifth Avenue, so we'll be traveling westbound when they get to B Street from Fifth Avenue. That's as far out as that projection goes, so, but yeah, for, as far as distance, but at that intersection, we would be seeing 41% of the traffic on Fifth Avenue. That's 41% of, of the, the project-generated trips. And then during the PM peak, that number is 36%. I believe that answers her question.
Does that answer the question? I don't, I don't recall who asked that.
Yeah, I think that's...
I believe it much, yeah, she, yeah, she was talking about directional.
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like the question was answered.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
I was going to ask if any, if we should take a quick break before we go into Commissioner deliberations. Okay, so let's take a five-minute break, be back by five minutes to nine. Mary texted me, oops. All right, maybe we could have a seat. I'll give you a minute to get plugged in. Okay, so we'll get started again. Thanks for the break, and at this time, we'll go to Planning Commissioner comments. So is there anyone amongst us that would like to start?
Through the chair?
Yes.
I do not want to start on the comments, but I do have one question, one follow-up question. So these units are, the rental units are going to be 80% of AMI, correct?
That is correct.
So what, what, what is 80% of AMI? Do we know that?
I can look up the range, if you give me just a minute.
So while you're doing that, I believe there was a project that was brought to the Planning Commission in the last three or four months, where one of the points of contention on approval of the unit was that they are proposing eight or 10 units at 80% AMI, and it was staff's position that they didn't want to manage those as part of their housing element, or housing program, because they have found difficulty in actually renting the units. Do I remember that discussion properly?
I believe you're referring to the Hayward Park Station, and they were, they were proposing moderate-level units, and we were, we were, I think, proposing that they bring them down to a lower AMI. What we did not want to, to manage was the moderate-rate rental units, because those were deemed by City Council based on, you know, input from staff and our, our history with trying to occupy the moderate-rate units, that they were difficult to modify when they were rental units, because they're so close to market rate, and in some cases, higher than market rate for older building stock.
Okay, so they're, they're more than 80% AMI?
A little bit of a different situation.
Okay, thank you, that was my only question.
All right, thanks for that clarification. Who would like to start with comments? Commissioner Wiegand?
Thank you, through the chair. I'm going to go through, preview here, land use, housing, retail, and design. So land use, these three land uses, retail, office, and housing, it's almost a microcosm of what I think we want to have downtown. It's an, this is an office and retail zoning area with a residential overlay, and that's sort of literally what we got, overlay of residential on top of it. So I feel like those are the right, those are the right uses, but I know this, this commission at the previous study session, before I joined, was concerned about the balance, particularly between the office and the housing, and I think you see that in some of the comments as well. I too would like to see a different balance. I wouldn't necessarily say less office, because I think jobs on transit is really, really important as well as housing, but more homes here, to me, seems like we're screaming out for that in a, in a housing crisis, in an affordability crisis. So to not have seen more housing units added, after the feedback, I think is disappointing. I think there's questions around empty office space, the, the prospect of that. Sorry, I'm distracted right now. Could this...
Hi, would you mind stepping outside if you're going to have a conversation? Thank you.
Yep, questions around empty office space, there's tech layoffs, if you're reading the newspapers, I think the economy does have cycles to it, and so I think you, you're going to see empty spaces, that, that comes and it goes, and then they come back. I think no one should know the market outlook better than the developer who's counting on the rents. Mr. Gilmore is not going to be in great shape if no one will lease the building that he's building. So if they're proceeding, I take that as a sign of, of confidence that, that they won't sit, sit empty. On the housing units themselves, for what it's worth, I'm, I'm fine with the unit mix. Where I'm coming from is that we, we need all types of affordable housing, there's not enough of any one type, and although I look, look forward to the day where we would only need one type of affordable housing, but until then, I feel like I'll, I'll take this, this mix, and I think it would be a great opportunity for someone to live here. As I was reading through the materials, noting the, the 2015 NEXUS study, that I think set the commercial linkage fee for in-lug fee, or for how, how many units you would provide, I think it says it's five affordable units for every 100,000 square feet of office, and so based on that, they only had to provide seven, seven and a half units to comply, and they've offered 10. So, you know, they've, they've exceeded that, but side note, I think I'm going to spend more time looking at that NEXUS study. I will, on the parking, I was, I was looking up what Kikui Crossing was, that's a point, basically a .7 parking ratio, and you see .5 sometimes with affordable projects on transit, so six, the proposal of six is in the middle there. I, I think more is better, but at the same time, and I have no data to back this up, I don't know how I would get it, but do you ever notice if you go to a restaurant, there's a full parking lot, and then there's a pile of bicycles off to the side? I, I don't know, those bicycles are usually by the back of the restaurant, and I think there are a lot of, of service workers that are actually getting around on bike, and so an idea I'm going to throw out there, probably for my own consideration in the future, is when you, when you look at TDM programs and transit passes and those sorts of things, I wonder if e-bike purchase incentives are another option to be looked at. I'm not suggesting it for here, but I'm trying to make sure I know, to the extent that I can at this time, what, what the real needs are of the type of, of the residents that would be here. The last thing I'll say on the parking, there's, to me, there's got to be a way for there to be 10 spots that have signs in front of them saying reserved for residents, and I appreciated the, the explanations from the building code, or what I think is the building code, the alternate means and methods. In my own mind, I thought there must be, probably naive with AMMRs, I just thought you can kind of propose something, and it can be accepted, so. Could you just have signs? That would be my contribution to the conversation, could you get up to 10, 10 stalls? It looks like there's extra parking, according to the studies, and they're just reserved for residents, so I understand that's not meeting the, the letter of the law, and I understand that would leave staff in a, in a difficult position, so that's my contribution to that. Retail, full-service grocery downtown is obviously important. I was informed that the Dragers in Los Altos is the same size, so I went down there today, and I walked through there and got some coconut water, and that's full service, as far as I can tell, they had all kinds of things in there, pretty much everything that's in the existing store right now, down to the flower market, and, you know, the grab-and-go sushi, and extensive wine collection, everything. It seemed full service to me, I was heartened seeing that, thinking that, that every, every sort of thing, and it was a lot of, I mean, it's all fancy Dragers things you see, a lot of more cheese than I'll ever buy. All the things that people might go in there for today, I felt confident that those are going to be there. So I, I thought that was instructive. I know there's, there's discussions, there's a condition of approval about, you know, if you can't get a grocer in here, someone emailed about the idea of a restrictive covenant, that was an interesting example from Menlo Park or Palo Alto. I thought about that, you know, that, in that particular case, the article described that they recorded the covenant, and they had two grocers come in and go out of business, and it's the third grocer that's hopefully sticking around now, and so it made me just think, if you even try to really force it to just be a grocer, that's not going to guarantee that it, it could just guarantee that it's empty, because no one else is allowed to be there. And so I don't know if it's the best thing for flexibility, but obviously what I want to see is Dragers right back there. The design, the architecture, to me, seems quite refined, and we were recently talking about the bespoke project across the street, and sort of this debate about the one big unified mass versus breaking down the block into smaller buildings. At that time, I hadn't seen this project, and now that I see it, I can get it. That can be a way to unify it, but also bring down the scale. So I think some of the detailing on the brick columns, the recesses in there, the articulation at the, at the cornice, it actually does remind me of historic buildings downtown, and it definitely does not remind me of the walls of glass that have been proposed and have drawn some, some, you know, negative reactions on the recent buildings. So it's human-scale in the detailing, depth and warmth in the architecture. I, to me, I feel like the, the applicant paid attention to, to recent discussions on this, and, and tried to, tried to respond, so. The plaza is also really generous, to me, the, some of the angles on the planters might need to be looked at, just on some of the desire lines that people have, but I think it'd be really refined. I'm, I'm not, after the explanation from the engineer, I'm not concerned about removing and the replacing of the trees. I noticed that... I noticed that, you know, there's some nice olive trees there now, and, and the, the design of the plaza incorporates olives into that, I thought that was a nice touch. So for me, does this conform? Yes. Can I make findings for the, for the SPAR? Sorry, that's what I call it in my head, Site Plan Architectural Review. Yes. Can I make findings for the site development plan application? Yes. And then can I make findings for the affordable housing plan? Also, yes. Do I think it's the best project for the site? Not quite, but I don't think it's the standard to which I'm bound, and those are the extent of my thoughts. Thank you for listening.
All right, thank you. Who would like to go next with comments? Commissioner Patel?
Thank you, through the chair. I'll keep my comments short. The, as the staff report noted, since the study session, the applicant has made minor alterations to the building design, and so I, I find that, you know, I, I don't really have any new comments about the design, most of my comments from the last time still hold, but ultimately, I, I share the same concerns that I had last time, particularly around this finding, and I, I brought this up at the study session, is that one of the findings, and now there's a little bit of more detail to it, finding 1B states, "The development will not be detrimental to the harmonious and orderly growth of the city," in that, now we have some detail, "The project provides retail, office, and residential uses at intensities that would complement existing commercial uses in the vicinity and the downtown core." And so now, you know, a year later, looking at approved and under-construction projects in the vicinity and the downtown core, you know, we've built a substantial amount of new office, depending on how you calculate, north of over two thousand new jobs, and four hundred and thirty-seven units of housing. And so when I look at this project and I look at the fact that we're adding another five hundred plus jobs and only ten units of housing, I struggle to find that these uses complement the existing commercial uses in the vicinity, given, given what has already gone in recently. So that, that continues to be my biggest concern about this project. That's it for me.
Okay. Commissioner Abner or Nugent?
I'll go through the chair. I, I wanna echo Commissioner Patel's concerns about the jobs-housing imbalance. That is, to me, is probably the biggest issue I find with this project. The, the trouble I have is that we, we need to make findings according to whether this is compliant with our laws and our general plan, and given the combination of the state density bonus law and our general plan, this, this project seems to me to be compliant. The development, the, the clause within our conditions of approval, or the findings, I'm sorry, that development will not be detrimental to the harmonious and orderly growth of the city, I think that, that, that statement is really the only, the only area where you could probably say, hey, I don't know about this, I don't feel like it, it meets that criteria, that, that it is, is not detrimental to the harmonious and orderly growth, in the sense that it produces so much more jobs than it does housing. However, my general impression, and I would love to be corrected, is that the, this statement is a little bit recursive with the fact that if it complies with the, the current general plan, then it is assumed more or less to not be detrimental to the harmonious and orderly growth. And so I don't know if there's any, like, if there's any room to say, hey, we want more housing in this compared to the office as the, as our current general plan stands. And so this isn't something that we can legislate through a project approval like this, it's more something that we can take into account for future policy. I think the, on the, on other subjects, I think the, the design has improved, and I, I appreciate the changes that have been made to give it more detail, more texture overall. The, the frontage along B Street has always been a concern of mine as far as activation. I think that compared to what the existing Drager's building is, there is going to be more interest in activation along B Street because there will be retail frontage, at least part of there, that portion where there currently isn't, it's pretty blank. And so that, to me, is a general improvement. It's not what the city's codes want, but there is the room for the concession there in state law. The, the comfort or the balance that I see in that is that the gramercy is not going anywhere, and that actually ends the retail line of that side of B Street, and so I don't think it's, it's like we're disconnecting existing retail across the street beyond the Drager's portion of this new building. It just seems pretty much the same as it is currently from a, from a retail standpoint, with a little bit more interest along the, the face. So I'm okay with that. I think that, that's, that's an acceptable compromise. The, the other aspect, I would say, is that in the, in the, about a month, I think, we won't be able to require residential parking spaces in a, in a zone within a half mile of, of the train station. Nevertheless, I do think it would be nice to have ten spaces designated for, one for each unit. It seems that there is room for that, and I think that I'd rather have ten spaces than having a separated gated parking area for, for residents. So that would be my preference, is to rather have ten spaces, one for each unit, than creating a separated gated space solely for the, for the residents. Those are my general comments at this point for discussion.
All right, thank you. Do you want to go ahead, Commissioner?
Through the chair. First of all, I wanted to thank staff and the applicant for the concise package, a little longer than I would have liked to have seen, but lots of information. I did meet with developer, with a developer, and I have been to the site. The meeting with the developer was remote. So I'm gonna kind of jump around a little bit here, so bear with me, please, it's, it's awful early. I think, if I understand correctly, the commercial component will add a demand for roughly five hundred and twenty-three new housing units, if I understand correctly. And with that, there have been numerous studies that said one high-level administrative-type job creates three to five lower-paying jobs, and those three to five lower-paying jobs are not specifically in the locale where the office may be built, but it is, it, it does have impacts further down the, the, the employment line, and we never acknowledge that effect in our numbers as a city as we look at housing-to-job imbalance. I have never seen or heard anyone talk about or write that we have an office space crisis, yet I do constantly hear and read that we have a housing crisis. I find it, and when I, when I first was introduced to AB 1763, I thought it had great potential for our city and California if it was used properly. And then I realized that was somewhat naive of my part, because it could be used simply as an advantage for a developer to get concessions without it really following what I would feel the intent of the law. And those are just my opinions, yet in this particular development, we are getting the minimal housing, and there are some substantial concessions that are being asked. And I don't think, and it's legal to do this, but I don't feel that the city of San Mateo and its residents are getting the best project they could at this site. We, we are continuing to follow our existing zoning, which by all intensive purposes is failing us, but we can still fool ourselves and go back to it as a guideline, yet the results have not been positive for the city of San Mateo. Specifically, as my fellow commissioners have alluded to, the old findings component or directive of the harmonious and detrimental impact of a development, I think, is used in a narrow window. As we continue to exasperate our existing imbalance of jobs to housing, we continue to exasperate greenhouse gas emissions, which have and continue to create extremely detrimental conditions or outcomes to our city. Specifically, we've got large swaths of the city that are not protected well enough for even the conservative sea-level rise, which is coming much more faster, much rapidly than anyone had anticipated. We've got a billion, two billion dollar sewage treatment plant that is sitting in the worst position in the city, that is totally exposed to sea-level rise, and there's a direct correlation between an imbalance of housing and the job market that is contributing to our precarious situation as it concerns to greenhouse gases. So I do think there is a direct connection. If we think that we are addressing the most pressing issues of our day by putting small fractional amounts of housing in, in our, in our developments, then we will continue to fall behind where we know we're supposed to go, and those costs are going to be astronomical, and if we don't start to address it structurally now, we will never get ahead of it. Thank you.
Through the chair, I just wanted to mention that I did meet with the developers about two weeks ago and reviewed the presentation that they had, and then I've also been to the site multiple times, many, many times.
Through the chair, I will make the same comment as well.
Thank you guys for that, that's good to note. Yeah, I, I'll just note that I, of course, have been to the site too many times, and in fact, when my daughter got married last year, we bought about, I don't know, eight or ten cakes for the wedding cakes from Drager's, so we, we know Drager's very well. And, and I have also been to the Los Altos site a couple years, some time ago, so I'm familiar with that location, and I am the, I wanted the distinction of the Trader Joe's site because I've visited Trader Joe's many times. So I, yeah, I'll go ahead with my comments. I, I wanted to just also say thank you for the presentation to the applicant and to the staff because clearly a lot of time and energy and work has been put into it, and I just wanted to note, because there were comments both written and, and tonight, that, you know, that it was a, a big packet, as we often get, and, and that, you know, there was a short amount of time, I think it was the, you know, the required amount of time, but I just want to note how well organized it, the packets are always, but this, I mean, this, this isn't just tonight, but, you know, they're bookmarked, so I rely on that each time to flip between the sections. It's critical. This time you had all of the past materials, so I didn't have to spend time looking for the documents from our study session last year, they were all right there, and I could just click on the bookmarks, so I found it really pretty easy to, to go through, even though there was, you know, whatever it was, you know, a thousand pages or more, so. So anyway, thanks to you all. Also, I just wanted to comment that, like Commissioner Wiggins, I mean, I have to assume that the developers understand the market better than I do in terms of, you know, leasing office space and renting housing units, and, you know, although the jobs-housing balance is critical and something we talk about for every project, I also have to rely on the expertise of, and financial planning of the developers. So I guess I want to make a few points, most of, let me just see, I probably can scan through here a little bit. I, I think that the, generally, I think the, I mean, there's a few points that I was looking at as I went through it, and one of them I talked, talked about was the active retail space along B Street. I was, you know, that, that's less than what, what is required, but I'm, I'm, I find it satisfactory, I think it's acceptable, it's improved from the current building, so, you know, I, I think that's acceptable to me. I think the scale and the height and the building is acceptable, I like the, I actually do, even though we talk about the jobs-housing imbalance all the time, I do think that the mixed use of the building is really vibrant. I mean, I think that it, it's an exciting kind of, you know, central vibrant building, so with that, you know, truly a mixed-use project with, with all, you know, retail, I mean, the fact that you could live upstairs and go downstairs to the grocery store, the fact that you could work in the building and walk to the train or walk to the park, I just, I think it has a lot going for it. In terms of the, I, I would say that the parking is a, a problem because, only because it's such a stark difference, that there is a lot of parking in the building, which is important for retail and office, but I, I think there needs to be at least one per unit, and, and then the, you know, like, as, as the speaker said, we could, you know, work, find a workaround for this issue of the security, just because there's quite a lot of parking, there's currently more than even is required, and yet there's not even one per unit. And yet, there's not even one per unit. So, and if these are low-income, I think, I mean, I've found the same thing that, you know, I think lots of, you know, restaurant workers, for instance, are riding their bikes home from work, you know, at 10 o'clock at night, from downtown in the neighborhood. And yet, there's lots of people that also have to have a car to get to, you know, whatever, wherever their jobs are. I mean, I've talked about that before, whether it's on a construction site or wherever it is. So out of all those parking spaces, I think that it should be a condition of approval that there should be at least one per unit. And maybe we can revise that security piece. Let's see. Okay, in terms of, oh, the other planning kind of issue is, I think that the design, the building really improves what is an awkward space along Ellsworth now. I mean, I go down that Ellsworth many times by foot, by bike, by car, through Draggers or around it or whatever. And it's kind of awkward. So I think this will be improved, an improvement on it. See, okay, I'm going to go. And then I had a couple of design comments. So I do think that it's, I would say that it tends to be kind of, I guess what I would say, a transitional building. It's not particularly contemporary. It has some traditional elements. I like it, actually. I like the brick, and I like, I love the wood windows. I think there's a differentiation between the wood windows on the ground retail floor. And then I think there was a different window structure for the upper levels. And that's going to be a really warm and attractive use of materials. I think the recesses are, you know, kind of the depth to the window bays really gives a lot to the building. It's that kind of detail that I think makes a difference and takes it from being, maybe it's not particularly a traditional or historical-looking building, but I think it's got the kind of detail and attention to detail that we're looking for, that I'm looking for. I think that, so the only, the thing that I would say is incompatible are the railings. There's clear glass rail, frameless railings at the residential level and then at the commercial office level. And I think those are too contemporary. I would like to see that be, I mean, I know we're not doing a study session now, but that's my, that's one issue, I think, with the building. It is kind of a transitional style, but I'd like to see it, those railings have either frames or be more solid and less just clear glass, something less contemporary that would blend in more. And then, in terms of the housing, I personally, I think, you know, I see how the layout, you know, the mechanical space takes a lot of room. I just think the studio units are not that desirable. There's very limited windows. And the layout is a little bit, I don't know. It doesn't seem as, they don't seem as, they're so long and narrow. I guess they don't seem as desirable as the one-bedroom units. It would be nice if they could become one-bedroom units. But, so I guess those are my comments. I do think the, most of the design, Larry Cannon's comments were addressed pretty well over the course of time. We saw onings, we saw the corner at B Street and fourth be addressed. I think that was, I think that was modified from the last time we saw it. I didn't get a chance to look at exactly how much. But there was a little bit more prominence to that corner when there wasn't originally. So I was, I felt like the, I think that report from Larry Cannon dates back to January of 2021. So over the course of time, there's been some, many of those items have been addressed. So those are my comments. And I would say the only thing I would recommend would be that parking issue. Well, I mean, parking issue, and I think the railings should be less contemporary as a condition of approval. So with that, those are, those are my thoughts. Does anybody else have anything else to add?
Through the chair, I'm curious if staff needs a co-edalssance of direction on the parking discussion item?
Yes, it would be great to make one formal recommendation to the city council.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you for asking that.
Yeah, no, I'm still kind of listening to what everyone else is saying and trying to balance it. Could I ask a question of either staff or the director? It sounded like you were talking about the, even within the AMMRs portion of the code, it sounded, I think you said it was pretty prescriptive?
It's very prescriptive. It says the same. It's not substantially similar. It's not comparable. It says it has to be the same as what the requirement is. And so we did talk with our police department staff quite extensively in terms of whether the gate at the outside entrance was...
Sufficient.
Sufficient, the same. And it wasn't, it was, it wasn't deemed to be as secure. And so we couldn't say that it was the same.
I see.
And so there is that little bit of nuance there.
And then is it fair to say, in my understanding, that while it seems like everyone wants to find common ground and the applicant's willing to work with you, it seems like when you, it says, "Provide six parking spaces" or "Provide an alternative consistent with the municipal code. If compliance cannot be obtained, the applicant shall not be required to provide the parking." It sounds to me like it's unlikely that we're going to be able to find a compliant solution given the letter of the law?
Well, I think, so, I think that the letter of the law might be outdated, given the current state of legislation. So it's something that we would bring forward to council if the council has a desire to review, to see if there is a desire, number one, to update the residential parking security requirements, which are, in my opinion, very prescriptive and very precise. Or to make the AMR section slightly more flexible so that there is a little bit of room for flexibility, which I think really is the intent of that code, to get the same overall effect, but it might not be the exact same thing, that it should be substantially the same, but not maybe exactly the same. And so it sort of defeats the purpose of having the code when you don't have the flexibility that it's intended to provide. And so that is something that we could bring forward. And it's quite possible that in a year's time or six months' time even, that those codes could be different. Because again, we have a very different climate. If we want any parking in residential and that security gate provides a barrier to providing that, we're going to run up into the situation again. And to that effect, I would also just mention, I did hear several of the commissioners, I think at least four of you, express the desire to see those 10 parking spaces, one per unit. And because we cannot require it, I think you need to circle back with the applicant and make sure they're on board with that before we start modifying the condition of approval.
Thank you.
I don't quite follow what you mean, circle back with the applicant.
So because residential parking is not required for this project, the applicant has to be willing to put the residential parking in. And they had indicated they were willing to put six spaces. And so I heard the commission generally say that 10 spaces are preferable. The applicant does need to agree to that in order for us to impose that condition, requiring the 10 spaces, because per the laws, they're not required to provide any.
Right, okay, I see. So we cannot just make that a condition of approval? That needs to be their choice?
Right.
And I'll just note for the record that I personally don't feel like the applicant should be required to provide any parking, given the change in state law that's coming in a month. To me, it doesn't make sense to have that be a requirement at this point.
Just so we're clear, because of the nature of the units and the density bonus law, they currently aren't required any parking?
That's right.
Okay.
They're not required to provide residential parking.
Okay, so we, which we're seeing on screen was modified because we can't really require them to do that. Okay.
Correct, this was a discussion item that we had with the applicant.
Yeah, so you did have it on screen a second ago, though, as, you know, one of the points of discussion or recommendations. And so, yeah, that one, so discuss and provide a recommendation. So that's what we can do in this venue at this time, is we've discussed it and we've each provided what, you know, our recommendation is. But we can't, as I just requested, I can't request that it be made a condition of approval.
Sorry, I just want to interject one more time. So I should also keep in mind that this is a recommendation, not a formal action. And so you can still recommend that to the council, but still, the applicant would still need to agree to it.
Yeah, they can disregard it if they want. Okay. Okay, so I think, I mean, on point number one, I think that we've all, well, if we haven't, we can do it now. But I think that we've all provided what our recommendations are.
Sorry, through the chair. As I was listening to this more, I feel like there's actually two things going on. One is just the amount that's going to quote-unquote "provided", but it's the caveat that if they can't comply with the code sections, then it's going to be zero. And I just wanted to chase down, it sounds like there's nothing that this commission or even the council on December 1st could do about that stricture. It would be that you pick an amount of parking or you recommend an amount, council, you know, they talk about with the applicant, they land on a number. And then time goes on, 6, 12, 18 months, and there's a chance that the, their codes could be loosened to actually allow them to comply.
Yes, and I would say that, just based on sort of the feedback that I've heard here and just sort of around, that I would think that there would be a fair chance that that code, that those codes would be modified.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to make clear that the code modification wouldn't apply just to this project. Of course, it'd be for all future projects, knowing that the state law is going to be changing. And it would be similarly situated. Mixed-use projects likely would avail themselves of the code modification loosening as well.
Well, it's interesting because when you submit a building, a project to the building department for plan check for a building permit, you're sort of locked into the code that is in place at that time. And you're, and the, you know, like the architect's not responsible to like continually meet new codes as it comes along. You meet the code that is in place at the time that you make your application. So I don't, so does that, is that not the case with the planning application?
It's not the case with the planning application. So typically, the completeness of the application, when, once it's deemed complete, then we look at things like the zoning codes and all the land use codes. And those are sort of locked in at the time we deem an application complete. Or if there's a pre-app under state law, then there's a different type of vesting timing. When you submit for a building permit, it's different, and the codes are different. And in this case, we're talking about something becoming more flexible, not more stringent. And so I think it's a little bit of a different situation.
Right, okay. So, so looking at item number one, do we need to discuss that any further? Or does everybody feel like they've provided their recommendation?
So our recommendation is one per?
Well, not every, not every ones.
Okay, so our recommendation is mixed. Sorry, I'm wearing my staff hat. What do they write? Do they write we said 10?
You need a motion and a second and a vote.
Okay.
So that will take care of any dissent.
On item one, is that right or no? Or just overall?
You can do all those ones.
All one, okay.
Through the chair, I just want to make sure that any recommendation regarding residential parking is basically us asking the applicant, can you do 10 units or 10 spaces or six or whatever? Is this...
You could make the recommendation exactly how you would like to see the project. And then the applicant could have the time between now and the city council meeting to figure out whether or not they could do that. And then the council at their meeting will decide when they review and deliberate on the project what they think is the appropriate amount to approve or not approve.
Okay, so the only thing is that if we are going to, you know, make a motion for these two items, well, I mean, I guess we don't, I don't know if we all agree on everything at this point. So I guess, do we, does anybody want to make a motion at this point?
I'll take a stab at a motion. And I usually get the wording wrong. So apologies in advance. I'd like to make a motion for approval based on the findings as conditioned, recommending to the city council adoption of a resolution to approve the site plan and architectural review and site development plan application, approving an affordable housing plan, adopting an addendum to the 2010 General Plan Environmental Impact Report and 2009 Downtown Area Specific Plan Initial Study, mitigated negative declaration under the California Environmental Quality Act, and provide a recommendation that there be one parking stall per unit for the residential parking spaces.
And if you wanted to also include the amendments that Wendy shared, the conditions of approval?
I did, those, I intended to do that. Sorry, I was thinking of the "as conditioned" here. So, and tagging on to all that, the overall, the post-packet proposed modifications to conditions of approval. Thank you.
Is there a second? Can I second that? I'll second that. Okay, so at this point, I would like to take a vote on that.
Yes, Chair Williams?
Yes.
Vice Chair Nutter?
Nay.
Commissioner Nugent?
Yes.
Commissioner Patel?
No.
And Commissioner Wiggins?
Yes.
All right, that is three to two. Recommending as motioned. All right, that's the recommendation that goes to city council. And I think at this time, I can close that item. Great, all right, thanks, everyone, for the discussion on that. And I don't know if there's, there's not anything here for announcements at this point. Okay, all right, we can close this meeting. Thank you.